Council meeting for the town council in March is ordered for February 22nd. And Mr. Moore, would you be able to take a role for us?
Ms. Hannah.
Yeah.
Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Mayor Bumpion.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Harkness.
Here.
Okay, Paul will join you in closing the reasons. I thank you, David, for the pride of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, a nation under God, with the invisible, liberty and justice for all. Counsel, well, first of all, I want to say welcome to our guests back here this evening. Thanks for coming to the show. And then, Counsel, you have the agenda that we're going to do for the evening. And I have a chance to go over the schedule. Have a motion to accept your agenda. Do you have any other agenda this evening? I do have a motion of a second. Also, you have a second discussion on the agenda. Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And ayes, that has passed in the GIL council present agenda. The next set of agenda has been from the January 18th, 2022, meeting of the town council, of course, the meeting, the minutes from January 31st, 2022, special call meeting of the town council. And now our financial statements for January 18th, 2022. And I do believe that you had a chance to read it over. If there's no question about that, a motion to accept the present agenda. There are, you'll be accepting the present agenda, which consists of the minutes from January 31st, which was from 2022, meeting of the town council. Minutes from January 31st, 2022, special call meeting of the town council. And the financial statement of January 31st. And motion of a second. Second and any discussion during the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And ayes, that motion has passed, also. So we go to the citizens' comments. And Todd, before we go into review, has there been any?
No, sir.
No, the comments. Okay. And are there any other citizens' comments this evening? I do not. And then, what's the audit Friday of the year ending June 30th, 2021? Is there anything for that audit?
Yeah, hold on one second. Thank you. Amber, can you get the microphone? Mr. Kelly, can you hear us?
Nope.
Mr. Kelly, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Hmm, why was that doing that? How about now?
Ah, yes, sir.
Yeah. Can you see us?
I cannot. I see you, but you are not seeing my camera.
Huh. Todd, tell him to give us a second. Todd, tell him to give us a second. He can.
Yes, sir. Can you give us just a couple of minutes here?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you can see us?
Yes.
He can only see me.
Oh.
Ask him to un, or to turn his camera on.
Can you turn your camera on, James?
Ah, he does.
This, this, there we go.
There we go.
He's ready to go. Yep, let me share that a minute.
Hey, James.
Yes, sir.
We, we can hear you, we can't see you, but, but I'll just, we'll just go and let you start and, uh, Chris gets you going here, but if not, um, okay, wait a minute, no. There you go. You good?
Yeah.
All right, James, you're good to go.
All right. And you all were having, James Kelly, props of under half assistance. Um, do, well, they can change something there. So make sure this is right. Um, what I'm going to do is give our audit opinions, uh, our report on internal control, uh, some financial highlights, look at the governmental statements, the fund financial statements, and look at some, uh, general fund revenue expenditure analysis, uh, the water sewer fund, and some of this latest, um, financial information. Uh, and then we'll talk about, uh, some fiscal year 22 considerations. Uh, what we're going to do is, is, uh, express an opinion on the financial statements as to where those statements are, fairly presented, uh, in all material respects with generally accepted accounting principles. We also issue a report on internal control that we require to issue in accordance with government audit standards. Uh, this slide three, or four, excuse me, is an excerpt from our audit opinion. It is an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level assurance that, um, our profession, our profession allows us to give. As, as I said, as far as the financial statements are fairly stated, um, in accordance with, uh, accounting principles of the United States of America. So that's again, that's the, uh, uh, highest assurance that we can provide and the, the top opinion that you can get, so. Uh, the next, uh, next slide is the ex, excerpt from our audit point on internal controls. We do not issue an opinion on our internal controls, but we will let you know if there are any, um, control efficiencies that we consider to be significant efficiencies or, um, material weaknesses. And you can see from the, uh, text I highlighted there that, uh, we had no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses in the town's internal control system. Uh, the next slide just is a summarized, um, statement net position for the town, for the year. And then the, the statement is prepared on full accrual basis of accounting, uh, which, um, capitalized this all year, infrastructure, um, buildings, et cetera. And also, uh, records or, uh, shows you the debt that the town may have. You can see in the first column that the net position for the, uh, general fund for the year was a little over $4 million. And third column, the net position for the, uh, business type activities for your water sewer, um, fund, it, it was a little over $9 million. Uh, on the next slide, you can see that how we robbed at those figures. The first column shows that the general fund on the full accrual basis had, um, expenses and excess revenues of $158,504, uh, which is the third number up on the first column. And that reduced the net position down to 4.4 billion, $8,002 or $3, uh, from last year was 4.238,707. The business type activities in their third column, uh, showed revenues and excess of expenses of $141,197 for the year. So that increases the net position a year ahead of almost $9.3 billion. On the next, um, slide, there's a analysis of the governmental funds, mainly the general fund of the town. The, this financial statement is prepared on modified accrual basis of accounting. And, um, that's the basis that you all most likely use for your budgeting purposes. And under this basis, basis of accounting, you can see the, uh, fourth line up in the first column that your revenues, uh, exceeded your expenditures of 53, uh, by $53,470 for net loss for the month. So, um, you know, that's probably even, um, just a little, little above that, but, um, um, the, the next slide, uh, the, the town has a, um, minimum unassigned fund balance policy of, um, 15%, which means that your, um, finances not, uh, committed or assigned to other activities. It should be at least 15% of your, uh, annual general fund expenditures. As you can see here, it did decrease slightly, uh, for the year. You're still almost at 80%. Your unassigned fund balance is almost 80% of your, um, budgeted expenditure for 2021. So it's still obviously, uh, you're, you're well over your, um, uh, minimum fund balance policy. Um, next slide kind of shows the, how the, uh, general fund, the actual revenues compared to what was budgeted. You can see that there was actually more revenues received, um, than budgeted by $207,856. So, um, I think majority of that, um, was, was due to an increase in it was a logic tax the town received for the year. You can see that on the second, second river there that, uh, uh, the level of taxes were $154,410 more than was budgeted. Uh, like, like products on the expenditure side, um, uh, expenditures were $178,509 plus, um, than what was measured. So, uh, you combine that with the positive variance of the revenues, you're almost, um, around $400,000 positive variance, uh, that's your, um, overall budget, uh, exceeded, exceeded the net budget that you had budgeted. So last, this next, next slide shows, um, the revenues of the, the town for the last, um, five years. And as I pointed out on the previous slide, um, you can see that the local, other local taxes were still lodging and, um, needles mainly, and also cigarette tax as well, um, increased, um, almost 10% for 2021. Also, if you look at the charges for services, which is the second, uh, second river up in the table, uh, you can see that, um, the, uh, that increase in equity, uh, as well, that was due to increase in your trash refuse collection fees. Next slide does the, uh, same exercise for your expenses. You can see the apparent here, there's certainly an increase in public safety. I'm sure that was, um, a lot of that had to do with the pandemic. And the parks recreation, uh, its activities got more back to, um, the normal processes. So that's why there's an increase, um, in the expenditures for, um, 2021. Uh, the next slide kind of breaks down the, um, changes in net position of your water and sewer fund. And as we saw, um, on the earlier slide, that the revenues exceeded the expenses of $141,5047 for the year, so. And then for, uh, this whole year, uh, 22 considerations, um, the town received, um, some part of funding, American Rescue Plan, um, funding. This has to be expended before December 21st, 2024. It's imperative that the amounts expended are permanently documented and accounted for on a departmental basis. These funds will be subject to, um, an audit in accordance with the uniform guidelines for FY '22 through 2024 possibly. And we are recommended that look at our new select, um, the, the standard allowance that is, uh, available. Up to $10 million we spent on government services, uh, through the period of performance. Which, you know, that method seems, uh, most successful, um, that a lot of our clients are, are, are utilizing. Multiple uses of the funds include revenue replacement for the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue used for COVID-19 public health emergency. All the two revenues collected in the most recent fiscal year prior to the emergency. Also, COVID-19 expenditures were negative. The amount of impacts of COVID-19 include assistance to small businesses, households, hard hit industries, and economic recovery. Paying pay for essential workers, investments in water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure. The funds cannot be used, uh, to directly or indirectly offset tax reductions or delay a tax or tax increase. And the funds cannot be deposited into the pension fund. And that's my brief presentation, but I am certainly here to, um, answer any questions that, that may arise.
Counsel, any questions? No? How about staff, any questions at all? What?
No, I think we're good.
That's all, just once again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
All right, thank you all for having me.
You too.
Thank you. Very good. So with that, um, we get on to our staff reports. First up, it is.
You got to turn it on.
Well, the next one, turn on.
Press and hold the gray button.
Try now. That's me. You just, you do it and I got you.
This Houston system repaired Water Main League forty, West Oak Cross. Repaired Water Main League, Conker Street and Dixie Lane. Water Main League, Greece twenty-five, Western Powerway. Sewer Main Back of One Forty-One, Western Powerway. This is a project, Public Works, refurbishing pickled tables from shelters. Right now we're working on shelter five and one, they're already pretty done. Snow removal and variable maintenance. Repairing the lumping maintenance, cleaning up park restrooms, through sidewalk maintenance. The water department is still working with N four engineers on some valid issues of the filter system. Order on erosion control program, semi-angled calibration of magnets of levers and instruments. I'm working on some, ended up upgraded the water plant, start preliminary work from a high dive project. Any questions?
Counselor, any questions for this day?
One thing to add, the heat and air is installed for showing the one back in the corner.
Great. Thank you, Andy.
Appreciate it.
And next up is our planning department, she wants a report. Megan?
Try it, Megan. I got you.
Um, so we had a couple months coming, just last fall, you're driving around, getting out, back in the garage. Um, we had a permit for the new water pump plant for number five eleven and come through five, but they're coming down. Um, we have a lot of vision for cleaning business, they're not going to give the, if basically their companies, markets, it is their home. And then a cover return for nine six one one dot com, the street for a few of the storage and welding remodeling, and that one eight one. Um, couple updates, um, I'm meeting with someone from D W E to D three, D of community design. So I'm hoping to get communication with what they did in the process with various other things they use. Um, we had a day, we talked about some grants that we could apply for. Um, next month, we have a town public hearing on March seventh, um, to update the general maintenance, move our cushions. And for the department, they can grant either speed, one computer project. Um, they'll get their check like they want Friday. And then exit reminders for Earl House, F D Doug, and I've heard in five. And then just a little up for you guys on to go, uh, these are last month's numbers. The seventh round is a little slower, but we still had, they still had over two hundred fifty-nine this last month, which I think is impacted for about a one year on around in October. Yeah, we're good now.
Megan, do you know when the double award was last one time?
This is January.
The time before?
Yeah.
I think it was actually a little higher than the time before. I don't remember the time. I think it was seven, but yeah, social media.
Or with the two of the region, which is seven hundred.
Yeah.
I think some of the years were one down, it's like seven hundred something.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have, I know they're running that long drivers.
Any questions for another guy? Um, thanks, man. Appreciate it. And number three, public safety, not good report. Let's see if it works for you.
It's not going to. Just hit the arrow to the right. Um, first, I'd like to introduce. Mr. Timmy Wilkins is our intern at the police department. Timmy's a local hospital student and a Newmarket resident, but he also attends triple tech and the criminal justice class. So Timmy's getting to spend a few afternoons, three afternoons-ish a week with us. And invited into the council meeting to see how great this is and the other side of police work. But he gets, we have a list, a kind of a schedule for Timmy. And he's going some ride alongs and office work and reading code sections and such. So we're excited to have him here and hopefully teach him something. So for the month of January, there was a hundred twenty-nine day shift calls, a hundred fifty-six day night shift calls, total calls for service for the month, two hundred eighty-five. And same for total calls for the year. Need to place some efforts, a hundred and thirty-three action patrols, no full patrols. We've kind of switched power, logging, property, business checks, and kind of merging them all into action patrols. Currently, we don't have any long-term property checks. And with a month full of snow and average of what I felt was fifteen degrees, there was no full patrol. Uh, just a few notable events, January nineteenth, assisted Northwestern P P Services Board with the mental health first aid training in Woodstock. Uh, that was for Valley Health and Police. And there was also some folks from Northern Virginia there. It was a really good sized class. Uh, January twenty-seventh, I attended the Shaw County Public Safety meeting. No observed many hours. The detailed list, um, the suspicious person calls number is still what I consider to be above average. Maybe after a long time, the words got out to report suspicious individuals vehicles and places. It's the only thing that I can be sure of that's it. Uh, three summonses for warnings for the month. One misdemeanor arrest for the month. No T D O E C O for January. Um, I'll just ask that you continue to keep Officer John Painter and Security Guard J J Jupson and your prayers and their families in the Bridgewater College community and that police department or the third walls. It's been a pretty tough week or couple of weeks in the valley for law enforcement, those communities, but just continue to pray for them. Is there any questions?
Yeah. So suspicious questions.
Yes, sir.
Chief, any comment on E C Os and P D Os? We seem to be. I know you need to say that a lot.
I do, and and. So oddly enough, Mr. Hughes, I'm I'm working on a presentation to the Northern Virginia Daily that you give me a deadline for tomorrow looking for numbers. And oddly enough, TV three has called me today about wanting to do an interview tomorrow. Our numbers have dropped significantly. Uh, what was it, dawn of eighteen or fourteen to six, I think, since two thousand eighteen? Um, what can I contribute that to other than good police work, good training, and guys are making new connections? We. So so the the Northern Virginia Daily and I think the the TV threes, um, they want to know this data. So the issue is that mental health consumers are laying in hospitals for ninety-six hours and not receiving any crisis care and being released. That is a significant issue. I can't control western state. I can't control any of that. Knock on wood, we have not been tasked with setting with someone for ninety-six hours. It's a matter of time before it happens to us. I talked about that last minute, our last minute meeting. We need to change for law enforcement, and we're spending all this time not on patrol, which is hard on us, hard on our tax base and paying these guys. But we need to start for mental health consumer. It's no good to be taken from your house, handcuffed, set in a hospital for ninety-six hours and not receive crisis care. We can't keep putting it on us. We can't put it on them. That's where our focus needs to be. That's my message tomorrow for the Northern Virginia Daily and TV three.
Where's the C S B?
C S B makes a decision if you need further hospitalization. And if you do, it's, then you need to go to a private hospital or to a state hospital. There's just this huge long waiting list to get into the the hospitals. And there's many factors, COVID, staffing, beds available. Those are the the issues. We need to, we need to change some of how we're doing this. We need to come up with new programs that you're staying in your area for twenty-three hours. We need to continue, not we as a law enforcement, need to better our service to that and recognize that these people are going into crisis and try to prevent that. That's what we've done here that I believe works. It has worked. We have folks that we dealt or not dealt with, but was in crisis two or three times. We thank Williamsburg, Virginia Beach, wherever. Now when they don't feel good, they call us and say, hey, can you take us to the hospital? Or can you take me to the hospital? I'm I'm not feeling well. Or can you help me get a hold of my case manager? That's what we're doing. Is that what we're supposed to do? Yes, that's good police work. And selfishly, it keeps one of our staff members from sitting in a hospital for ninety-six hours and keeps them out of the hospital. Not all the time, but it it helps that process for them.
Thank you. I appreciate the free, free announcement, asking, free news.
You know, how that turns out, but that's what I'm going, what's your tonight? So hopefully Kobe from W H S V is listening, but that's, it's not for us anymore. That that's not what we need to, it's not happening. And we all, or I forgot to mention this, a lot of administrators met last week or the week before with C S B. And, um, which we do that monthly and talk about these numbers and why things aren't happening. So we're, we're trying to put our heads together. We have a problem, but until you have a solution, you have no complaint where I come from. So if we can give them a solution, the state, someone, that may make a difference.
Any other questions for the team? Thanks, Pete.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. And of course, last but definitely not least, the defensive marketing this over street.
I guess I am. All right, so Talk New Market P A podcast for two thousand twenty-two. We just did our first recording last week with people on Frasier, representing Community Care and Learning Center. So that was interesting. That was very enlightening. And that will be, it's recorded and it should go out sometime this week on our website, social media, and so forth. And then we'll start looking at getting everybody else in for each month, so we can look forward to that. Um, the big ticket item right now I have on my plate, um, along with a whole bunch of other things. But right now, the Shenandoah County two hundred and fiftieth birthday bash is coming up next month. So that is in the forefront priority right now, um, because that is the first event that we will have. And that is on March twenty-sixth from six P M. to eight P M. at the Virginia Museum of the Civil War. And please consider this, or save the date. I will be sending out emails and invites, so you guys are invited. And we will also be inviting the other town councils and other collective officials to the end of our birthday bash as well as the citizens of our community in Shenandoah County. Um, it is going to be a free event and we will have birthday cake. We will have lots of different interactive stations, some special speakers and working on some more fine details. But it's going to be, it's going to be good. And I think it's great that we here in Newmarket are able to host the first kickoff event for our year-long celebration of two hundred and fifty years. The events besides that one, so we have dates set for the bigger annual events that we do here in Newmarket and filling vans and food truck spots. Um, I only have a few more available for crossroads, so that's, that's exciting. Um, and I meet with fireworks committee next week. Can you leave that? Talking about fireworks, all right. Project Set in Motion is the wave mining signage. Um, we're looking into some stuff and how, it really sounds kind of silly to say, how do you start that? But it is a huge project. It's a huge undertaking. Um, and we want to make sure that we are utilizing our time properly and not having to backtrack because we didn't do something. So Todd and I and Megan are working on that. Um, downtown, you're all, project I have in mind, there has been a discussion with the owners of the property that I think would be great. And so they they were on board, now we're just kind of hashing out what that's going to look like and more of a legal side of things. And then R O P web for the website, the new website has been drafted and we're just kind of looking at that and dotting some i's, crossing some t's. And then updating verseurs and event graphics for two thousand twenty-two. Any questions?
Amber, can you?
Thank you. I am too. I'm really excited that we're having it down here. And we've had a lot of like news. There's newspaper involvement. There's other magazines and stuff that the Shenandoah County tourism know about, that people are doing pieces on and blogs. So trying to pull more people into Shenandoah County, but focusing on Newmarket for the first one. So that'll be really good. Thank you.
Amber, can you bring the clicker?
Yeah.
Okay, so council will move on to our action items for.
And then number one, because you have the action items, you could just tell you to the bicycle start. Because that's what happened.
Yeah, so we have a couple of these already served and their time has expired and we kind of fell behind a little bit on this. They don't meet very often. I'm not even sure the last time they didn't meet. So Mr. Larry Hill, Mr. Robert Moore, they already served on the board, so can we pop them there? Well, I'll throw them in. And then we've asked Mr. Eric Ball, who's on plan condition, if you would, because he did have one picked in the spot. We did ask for a few of you on the term of the season. So these terms would be their three-year term. I need to say that in a longer time. And so it would be, become effective March first, we're not going to meet before March first. And then the term will end at the end of February twenty-five.
So what you're saying is it's just the previous of while we're going to get that one that you see.
Yeah, so we're asking you to appoint Larry Hill, Robert Moore, and Mr. Eric Ball.
Counselor, any questions?
More, we have Johnson.
Yes.
Oh, all right, yeah, and Mr. Johnson, sorry. You can't pay.
Seven minutes, can I make a motion to accept nomination? Historical over the district, the U-boys, two thousand twenty.
That all you need, I assume, for the terms of March first through, March first, two thousand twenty-two to February twenty-two thousand twenty-five? There you go.
Do you have a motion and pay you a second on that? Okay, so we do any discussion on the motion? Very none? Very none, Mr. Lawrence?
Mrs. Hannah. Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yep.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
So next on our agenda is a discussion and consideration of a request from the New Market Farmers Marketing.
Yeah, and this is the same as every year. Um, they set up in our parking lot. They, they put up some signs. Um, and they, they're scheduled to begin, and now we watch it, people this year, or before, but they do extend their hours a little bit during the summer, which is seventy. There's really no change or no replacement in terms of here, um, after the park. And I think they did pretty good last year, right? It seems like that, that area is starting to work.
Any questions, council? If not, no, here's a question. Because you are the Farmers Market, you go to five thousand, you do that. You have a second?
Sorry.
Second? Any discussion on that motion? And have a none, Mr. Lawrence?
Mrs. Hartman? Mrs. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. King? Mr. Hughes? Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hannah? Mr. Carey?
Motion has passed, thank you. And then third, on the action items is our discussion and consideration of resolution number two forty-two, a resolution in support of the U S B R two eleven, five, wow. And to say that everybody in the board have been here, we agree that resolution, we have that in our notes, of course. Um, Todd, you wanna go?
Yeah, Megan's gonna give you a quick, just a quick overview of the.
So the presentation is one of the back end, but just a quick review. Um, um, so what they're trying to do is they're providing a national, a, a backdrop system through the United States. Um, there's a couple in Virginia already. Um, so you see the map, they're mostly on this coast, working on the way across the country and down the coast. Um, so in Virginia, there's one from D. C. to North Carolina. Uh, then there's one from Georgetown, Kentucky, and, and also Virginia. And then one, a couple way to connect the Shenandoah Valley to that northern part through. So it can go all the way. Um, and there's some support from us, saying that we're into it.
There's really no commitment on our part, is there?
No, there's no, there's really no financial commitment. This is just a resolution of support for that they can do the DOD for this and signage and stuff. Um, I, I spoke to Jason about it. He was fine with the resolution, not later, as we did, other than we do support to buy crowds. Now they, they, you know, route, there, there may be some, they're gonna have some changes probably because some of the places they're showing, because that's the one through private property or they're gonna have to some, somehow acquire a, a easement or something. But that would hardly on land would go in our, in our, in our, in our, in our.
It does, they're grabbing out, they want to get more, more costs. Look down to the, more costs. We've got scare, fair, on the, on fairway, drive, that's like, some, some fairway was private, it's, it's with them. And they're trying to avoid going in Congress because it's, uh, not allowed. Just to avoid, uh, traffic. And if that really signs it, it's not, it's not, I believe, just because.
They want to be on fairway, John?
I won't.
Is there any discussion that you have been, okay, mentioned? To ensure that stronger, and it's not really like some of the jobs that I mentioned, we.
So, um, a lot of the kickoff are in the meeting, we, the bike, bikers all in. Okay, like, so we'll go to town and hopefully bring people who are, like, report, who need to town. So, so giving, like, good chance for the city to do. Um, they, they have a, they don't have that much safety, maybe. But, um, where the bike ride, like, they can notice that there was more boards than ever anything they had with us. Because people from all over the country drive to the house. They like, maybe they're, like, athletes as well, people don't like it.
So I thought the finding is, you know, real good, so it's, it's well, it's pretty, pretty much the right one, yeah. Any questions remaining or call, council? Thanks, I appreciate it. Um, council, um, do we have that resolution in front? Any discussion? And if there's not, oh, an interpretation on this action item?
I'll make a motion that we accept the regulations for the U S B R two eleven.
And do we have the motion on the floor? Do I have a second? A second? Discussion on the motion?
I have, I have a couple of questions. I do have some concerns about how they are thinking of driving it. Like, if you could, they're all driving, it's, it's going, it's, it's important that they're thinking of taking it, we'd be on to it. Crossing that top of the day, it's probably issue of.
Yeah. That's the part that, that we told them, we know that you, and they, they realize that they may have to acquire either an easement or some sort of permission or something. So even though they're showing a route, that route possibly changed just due to the fact of having to deal with the property.
And not to make order of use?
No, no. I mean, for what they're doing, and as much vehicle traffic that goes through Shenley to get, I don't know that Shenley would have an issue with it, but, yeah.
And then, and then even if they get there, once they come there, it's very narrow.
Turn on the fairway? Yes.
If you're in the road, and they go, you're on to you, all the way off, it's very narrow. And they're going, belonging to the same issues that you, you, this, you know, the, the, the.
Megan, Megan sent this to me and I did the state routes because I don't remember them all, but, um, the, the saving grace is, is this is not just your general bicyclists that's gonna complete this. These are people that, that, that's their, yeah, their hobby, does it all the time. Um, and the other thing is, it, it could be a group of three or four, two, one. It's not gonna be an overabundance of like we've had before, twenty-five at a time. I don't think so. Um, I mean, I could be wrong about that, but this is, this is, they.
Because that's the, the.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
That, I think what you see, Peggy, is more, um, yeah, for a pod type rider who are riding so many miles a day versus what these people, these bike bikers, Route seventy-six goes through the river valley. We would always see, especially during the summer, you would see bikers traveling Route seventy-six. And it was usually two, sometimes only one, but I would say usually two and no more than four to gather up.
Because it, it feels as an anticipation is, then, how it's, it's, these small, small roads, you're gonna be.
It, it would, yeah, for them and the, the motoring public.
Right.
Um.
And it wouldn't be fair to the residential section, so they're going to be driving.
To me, I don't see any different than what we already see through the summer or spring. Um, any, any given day in the spring or summer, more on Saturdays, but you can see four or five bikes at the, the cafe. That's the same thing. We, we could, um, I, I don't anticipate that causing a, a big issue. Where in the past, we've had the, Amber, what's the, the big bike ride that comes to Woodstock? It doesn't come to New Market, but it, for, it's Bike Virginia, Bike Virginia. This, this isn't Bike Virginia. This is just a group of people that are, are getting routes that, I mean, there's, there's people that spend their week vacation routing out. Yeah, they'll come, yeah. And, and I don't know, it could potentially help maybe down the road with V DOD and, you know, maybe some funding with lighting Johnson or something, I don't know, but.
And, and I guess another way to look at that, even if it wasn't dedicated, that doesn't stop likely providing, providing for those same areas.
Yeah, we saw, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of. Anyway, I just wanted to raise some concerns, because that's probably a good.
Any further discussion? I made one of those questions. Megan, you heard the conversation, are you in the committee, do you, which, which kind of things, and stuff?
So they only have one, so on, they, 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 um, but yes, they have the next, we like, please, watch that, that one today, Friday, and, we have to send it. Their next week, I'm recording them, and they're gonna add it on the calendar. So they're, throughout the entire process, they're making, making, from the localities that they're putting.
So what I heard was a general conversation sounded, well, even on the book, sounded relatively supportive, but we could tell you on, but this might be a, a historical, telling, um, um, so. Counsel, further discussion on the motion? Have a none, Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, Mrs. Hannah?
Yeah.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartman?
How?
Yeah, motion does pass. Um, thanks, Megan, for your guidance there. Um, we moved past the action items and we are on to our comments. And I'll start that off and hopefully I would say to the conference first, really appreciate everybody being there to attend this upcoming work session that we're gonna be doing. Um, we did that in the corporate pod, we have to run.
Just her.
Yeah. And again, the amount of time that we put in, um, well served the community. And not just the, this, the council, of course, staff, doesn't got saying, I realize that not everybody can be there and I know you want to be there, um, but I appreciate the time. It's personal time and I appreciate everyone's personal time. And that's the only thing I have to say. Um, so with that, I'll go to the council, is there any comments?
First one, I'd like to, just to describe the fact that last week, garbage day was preceded by some pretty windy, uh, blows through town, some of which knocked garbage bales over and tough. And I was privileged to watch our garbage man come through and actually got out of the truck, put people, um, put it up, really, put it back into the district. It was really kind of a surface oriented thing, and, and we thought we'd recommend it. Second thing I got a notice today from Penns. Uh, it announces that on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, the new event to drive through Northover, the twenty-fourth, the Southonder Street, will be planned, will permanently close and deposits alone will transition to our own town warranty debt. We're asking people to continue to drive online on your mobile devices and in person at all time warranted.
Right next door?
Yeah. I was really disappointed about a bank that has become a really important part of the community and has, and the staff that is really a part of this one. I hope, uh, I hope we can find a, a way to transition for the people's new markets. If there is, if there's, if there's, if there's, if there's.
Yeah, well, well made, um, thanks to you. Counsel, any other comments? None? Um, we're honored to have any additional staff comments.
Okay, I think that's me.
Okay.
So, so Megan mentioned we had a Zoom meeting today with the H C D. A lot of grant funding for a project like Community Center. Um, I would say that meeting was very positive. We will, she's actually, the lady's actually already sent us some information, um, and applications for a planning grant. Uh, will be available starting April first. We will try to have our stuff ready to get that planning grant application ready and get it submitted as quickly as we can. They said that once it's submitted, it takes about thirty days for it to be used and then they'll, 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 they'll. One thing that's very important that we put in that grant application is the vision for the center. So we have to decide March twelfth, what we're gonna do there. There also is a one million, up to one million dollar construction grant. It is a grant, it's not a loan. And this would, you know, once we have the planning process done, then we could actually go into, um, the fine for the construction grant. That application, I think she said was fall and then spring election. There's no way we will be able to, or be ready for the fall. This is not possible. Because there is a process you have to go through to get the, to fix somebody to be funding for. But even in a perfect world, I don't think we, they would, people worked on and do that in, in the fall. In the fall. But if there is a possibility, we could be ready for this project. That's really, I think it's happening, but, um, they, they like, it sounds like they like the project, they thought it, it was, and obviously qualifies, but you are, there is a confusing process, certainly. Just because you, we could get the planning grant, but not get the construction. But still, anything you can get towards that pocket, it's, it's, it's. Um, I don't know, the fifty thousand dollars, we'll be getting the planning done, but it, it, whatever, you know, it'll happen.
But the planning is fifty thousand.
So we are, we have looked, we have found something. Megan was actually having a couple of discussions, as she said, with people, um, there's one in Vinney that was kind of like what we have, is a technical, they're converting, like, people in recent, so she's getting her family this week. So, you know, things are moving forward. And, uh, uh, I, I thought today, I thought it really did. I was, wasn't really surprised how, how they were.
And, uh, in finding that, how, how did you, did Megan, you not troubled this? How did you?
Well, I'm, I made contact with somebody who was familiar with C D B G, which is really one of these community watching. And I have been told a couple of times here, we didn't qualify for C D B G. But after speaking to this gentleman, he said, oh, I think you do, you're on the list. And we don't, we may not qualify for all of what C D, C D B G provides, but, but for this, we certainly qualify. So, you know, it was just one contact, making contact, then send us information, then I can get them to other. And she made contact with the U S C D and, and here we are.
I appreciate how quickly guys have jumped into that, you know, getting ready for us for the Saturday. Um, and I forgot to say, it's which A D, I appreciate, I appreciate your time jumping to checking those new stuff, which was water issues. Amber and I sat through some of those discussions, so that it was all available. So thanks for talking on that so quickly as well. Yeah, it's very important.
Yeah.
And after the question, in, in order to expedite the competition, is there, is there anything that we, that we could do that, you know, through the second hour, is that, and, and what we need to, we need to.
Uh, well, we, we, we need to write, we need to explain to them what the plan is, what the vision is for that center, how it, um, affects the community, how it helps the community, why now? And a lot of the things that, you know, we can, we as a Megan, can. A lot of the things that, you know, we can, we as a Megan, can, can word that, but we really need to know what the vision, I mean, is it, we wanted a community center, what do we want in it, those are the type things that we need to know. I don't think we can just say it's a community center. I, I just threw out some things today, she seemed, she said, yeah, that's what we're looking for.
I wonder if Ken, what I think you do is, how, that was set by, talking about the thought that they have so many years to school.
Right.
And how many years? And the community looked so bad, and they build on that. And the, the fact that that was not really interested with me. And I didn't want to build on that, this thought of that. And then, and then run it back into the story, so to speak.
So I'm concerned just about how time front could have to be able to identify the time for people to include in that label first. Um, it seems like just a, a lot of work they have to do to win. There are people all over town coming up with ideas, and you all, you can be all over the place. I guess I want to pick up on how they, how to be ready to put some Ferrari on that thing, and actually be able to work. So, I guess I'm looking for some, some ideas to disallow it to, you know, the news. Somebody gathering information that we can, each from our, we can share up on, before, and I think. So that, that's a big, that's, that's, just to tie it up, it's kind of.
Yeah, and, and we do not have to put in the application as, as quick as April the third. But they did tell us, you know, if one occurs, you have that chance, obviously. And the money, you know, that money or that, it's not like they have all this money and then somebody gets it. So it is a possibility that if we're not ready, we won't commit, and then we may just push if there's more available time, way out than the fall.
Well, we could brainstorm, we could also have a few ideas.
Yeah. I mean, I think we, you have a pretty good idea of which one. We just need to.
And then we could prioritize.
Yeah, just to drill down in it and say, okay, this is what we want.
I could just get up, I'm gonna, um, often you don't get the grant on first line. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough thing, it, you know, it just is, and I mean, to me, it's, it is still going to be conceptual, even when it goes to a planner, you know, but that it would be a community center with, you know, topics of, you know, business, you know, whatever it is, I mean, you don't have to say it's a baby sitting facility in this room. It's more of a conceptual idea of what it would be, such a community center with, you know, recreation outside or, um, you know, startup businesses or, or whatever everyone pays. Um, but I do know from experience that first run is a tough run, and often if you don't get your foot in the door, you know, they're looking at you with the first run, you may not get it, but the second run you are. So that, and I would just also like to add that, uh, it's not that I don't feel anyone's capable of writing a grant, but I do believe having someone in the pocket that knows that, and making the contact that you have, that can review that before it's submitted, is huge, because they could be great planners on those words or phrases or two points that, that your, your folks are looking for, um, in a brand. Just a little suggestion, not trying to, you know, jump in on the specifics of it, but not stealing, but yeah, those things are key. Um, you know, that it is a well put together document, um, with some, some meat behind it, and that.
And that you use the words that they use.
Right.
That's right.
That's not true.
So without saying too much, I will say, the contact I have will know those words. Um, you, that person is working on a project, they got that money, so that's why, you know, I think we, we can.
It's very subjective.
Yeah, I think we can find it, and also, um, the planning district commission, they have two people that, that work in that time. So they'll, you know, I think there's help out there for us, um, Megan's, Megan likes to write, so I think that's a, that's a, that's a benefit there.
Well, I went to college, we think that's.
And, you know, I wasn't, I'm rarely involved with C D B G, but I was involved with C D B G, so, I mean, I, I do understand what, kind of what you're looking for. Um, I, I think we did, I mean, yeah, when we know, give it a try, we say, I think we really, so. We think we did, we worked a lot, so.
So Megan, no pressure on you, but.
Yeah, no pressure, yeah. Yeah, if y'all come back and say, why didn't you get it, I'm gonna say, I don't know, you have to have that, that part. Uh, but yeah, so I thought it was a good, good meeting, and I got a lot of positive. Uh, she mentioned a joint public hearing on March 7th, that, you know, that would require you to be here and have the final information. So as you know, Central County's tax rate or tax assessment increased by. If we, you as a council, want to keep your tax rate the same, which is fourteen cent or hundred, with the increase in the value, the assessments, that requires us to do a public hearing process. A public hearing process, based on, as you said, the, the information we are working on. Because what you're doing is if you keep your rate the same, technically it's due as a tax interest. Because the assessments have went up, so now people are paying that, it's due as a tax interest. In order for us to keep our rate at fourteen cents, we will have to go through the process. The recommendation of the mayor and Husa, I think it should stay. For us, it doesn't generate a huge, I think for us, it's.
About fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand. So it's not like, you know, you're going to be getting all this month, it doesn't really.
It could be more on.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, if you, if you would drop it back to get it to the rate where it's, um, level, you know, I think we would have to go back to twelve.
Eleven, eleven something.
Yeah, eleven, more than eleven. So that, we are going, preparing for a public hearing to, to leave. And I believe, if I'm correct, we can go through that process, you can have that public hearing, but that doesn't mean you have to keep your rate. You could come back, or if you get a lot of, or if you change your mind.
Do you need to do some preliminary work on that, or is it still? I think that should actually be, we help us with that. So to understand, hopefully, whether, uh, how you would like it, we'd be pre-licensed, bring it back to us, if that's understandable. Fourteen cents upside, should we ever? Do you have the phone number, anybody? No, I, I could be, God, you're very good, it's, it's sort of coming up in a model, so.
Okay. Yeah, we can buy, it'll probably be like a ring. Because, you know, some people give one up thirty percent, you know, twenty percent, and other people, I've heard, some people give thirty percent. It would be, so, but yeah, we can, we can buy it. The, the issue is, we cost a budget, and what we have to do, I mean, it's kind of got to be done, so that's why we're working on the, the public. Um, I talked about this a little bit, but I've been talking with the, with the, about the law field. They are willing to go in together to actually redo the infield of the real estate deal, and they also want to work on the big, the big field law. It's going to be next week, but what, what they're asking of us is, I think, if they're willing to put in money on our field, I think we should do that, and it will improve the field, it will make, uh, the Royal Field, I think they're actually talking about giving people to extend the basis, and you could ask them to call me a few more events, so, uh, so, you know, hopefully next week, we can do it, because they like to get, especially the Royal Field, like to get that run prior. Uh, other than that, the March 12th community center thing, um, we are going to be at the community center. It'll be in the cafeteria area, we will turn the heat on. Mayor has come there last Thursday, me and Peter, in a forty degree building, sitting on metal chairs, I mean, I'm eating in a asshole.
You guys.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but yeah, I think it'd be good to meet there, and to be in the building, and, um, and, and the focus is on the community center, but there's some other stuff we need to talk about. I hope to have a little more information on public works building and, and the cost for us building ourselves. And just, David and I met once, moved here last week, they looked aside, we were sure we could have something. So, yeah, the focus, we're getting community center, but there may be some other stuff we just, we need to talk about. Um, there will be other stuff we need to talk about. Um, so other than that, I'm good.
Other than that, comments?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know how you're planning to go through your brainstorm on the retreat, council meeting, whatever. If y'all wanted to get lists to me of your brainstormed ideas prior to that meeting, I could create some sort of spreadsheet so you could at least see where you have commonalities, if you want to do that.
As far as outlines, or what we'd like to discuss that day, or maybe the idea.
Just regarding the community center, what your brainstormed ideas are.
Each of you, as far as you.
You don't have to, I'm, I'm just putting it out there, I'm willing to do that, if that would be helpful.
I mean, we, we have ideas, and we, we'll certainly present that too. And I have a feeling, you know, each, all y'all are probably going to agree on one, which, which, which. And I think, you're probably going to, some of the stuff we've done is probably going to be on the list. I think we're all in the same mindset, this is from my perspective, I disagree all the way, if we need.
Thanks, Megan. Yeah, so yeah, counsel, if you'd like to put some ideas, ideas and send them out to Donna Shep too, so she can follow them, learn from that.
One more thing, I did mention it in the update, but, or some, like, our sidewalk project looks like it possibly is going to be redup. I've got some headwork I'm still working on, I gotta talk to her, I have a perfectly good stand, hopefully tomorrow, just to make sure I'm sitting on what they need, but. As I thought would happen, there's money available in our projects, we're going to use that, so hopefully ours will, will be redup. One more thing we can pick off the list. Also, I keep, um, I drive a retreat, next, I've talked to Amber and Chris about next month's podcast. I know we want to get the word out the best we can, so next month, I think it will be the mayor and I, the mayor or I, we'll do the podcast, and we'll go through the list of communities that we want to, and stack. And probably give updates to everybody, what we're on the community center, what we're on the water project, what we're on the several projects. Um, so that way, too much of the, I don't know, we don't know what's going on, it's the podcast, we're going to lay it out there. Going back to the planning meeting, I know that there's been talk about, you want to get the community involved, and one of the things that you're required to do is have a public, while you're in that process. So there will be community, not, we, we, we want them involved, but part of this grant, you have to give, give the public an opportunity to, to be involved. I'm going to, sorry. I don't know.
And before you take, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second? Second, all of them, they say aye? Okay, Dave, this meeting is adjourned.